I will now call to order the Withfield Town Council meeting Monday in December 11, 2023 at 5:00 PM in the Municipal Building at 150 East Monroe Street in Withfield. We do have a quorum. I will ask you to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance by Vice Mayor Captain Patterson.
A pledge of allegiance to the one and the only States of America and to the Republic for which saints, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first on the agenda this evening is the approval of the agenda. So for this, I will need a motion. And a second, and it will be a roll call vote.
Yes, I do.
And the motion, do I have a second? Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Real quick, can we make an amendment to the agenda? Real quick, just something you got to head every time I hand up ideas.
Well, this would be the place to, I guess, to do it.
Well, we still need to go through the public hearing on January 28th. Would you be ready to answer that?
I don't think so.
Okay, so we need to make an amendment to cancel the public hearing on January 28th.
To add an item to tonight's agenda to cancel that.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
We just found it.
All right, so with the amendment to the agenda, do I have a motion?
I agree to that amendment.
You have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. All in favor, it's going to be a roll call vote. So we'll start with you, Ms. Johnson.
Johnson, aye.
Atkins, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Gilman, aye.
All right. Next on the agenda is a consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of the town council work session and a regular meeting of November 27, 2023, which requires a motion and a vote. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion? I hear none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye as well, that motion passes. Next on the agenda, we have the privilege of having some of the JAM students here this evening to show us a little bit of their art. And JAM stands for Junior Appalachian Musicians, and I believe they've been about five years, is that what we're figuring out? About five years in having these children, teaching them how to do, you know, all sorts of music. So you're on.
We, like I say, we formed the Withfield County chapter about five years ago, but we were very much shattered by COVID. So most of this bunch has only been playing the year, the bass players have only been playing about five months. They've been remarkable, but Junior Appalachian Musicians started about 20 years ago in Sparta, North Carolina, and has spread through five states. We've got, knocking on 60 chapters. I'm music director of Withfield County, but I'm program director of the whole thing, so stay pretty busy with it. But this is our pride of Withfield County here. I need to say something about this young lady right here. Savannah Hodge has been with us for quite several years now. Savannah's the youngest JAM instructor of the whole, all 60 chapters. She has represented Withfield County at the Virginia State Fair, at the International Bluegrass Music Association in Raleigh, North Carolina, and several other places. But I don't want to run my mouth all night. I want you all listening in.
So we would like to thank you for your support in the program. And so we're going to be playing some Christmas songs for you. Our first song we're going to play is "God Rescue Mary Gentleman." The second song we'll be playing is "Jingle Bells." The final song we will be playing is "Silent Night."
We had about 35 kids sign up this year. So this is the events class, and we'll be, we've got one more session this semester, and then we'll start back in March. Anybody would like to come by and watch us? It's zoo. No, it's a lot of fun. We're on Wednesday nights at 6:00. Really, I'll throw the invitation at time of coming.
Where is your location at?
We're at the Heritage Preservation Center.
Okay.
Thank you all for that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Thank you all. All right, next on our agenda is a presentation by building official Tim Spraker on the proposed amendments to the Building Regulations Section of the Town Code. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, is this thing on?
I think so.
Calling some cocoa now? Maybe build a snowman?
That was wonderful.
Very tough act to follow. So, yeah, I'm here to propose tonight that, or try to encourage you to upgrade these building regulations that we have in effect. Could you take us to the slide? Thank you, Elaine. We have gone quite some time without a upgrade or a amendment to our building regulations, building code, however we want to look at it, it's regulations. The, it was put together a long time ago. I think, looking at some of the dates here, it was kind of amusing, 1967. That was just, I was five years old at that time, but the building code came into effect in Virginia in 1984. And in 1987, I believe, the town added this chapter, which, which is great. Back then, the town was organized a little differently, I do believe. The last I remember was Stan Massey and Albert Newberry, and those guys wore a lot of hats. And they kind of tried to meld everything into their department, and their department covered everything. Well, we have upgraded, and as of today, we're taking a lot of these regulations that were in then and putting them in their rightful place as far as where they go. The, next slide, please. There was a lot of redundant material in there. For instance, trades, the electricians, plumbers, HVAC guys, they're all trades folks. And they had something like three pages of their own regulations where we can, you know, they all said the same thing. The only thing that changed was the name of the trade, electrician, plumber, HVAC. So let's call them all trades, let's take out six or eight pages of jargon that nobody really needs to hear or just feel like they're repeating themselves, and make it shorter. Fire districts is in there. Of course, I know that the building department, like I said, was melded together with the fire department, and that doesn't need to be. Backflow devices, every, every year, a backflow device must be checked annually. Well, that's not a building code. We ensure that a building, whether it be residential on the meters, and anything commercial gets a backflow device. And when it comes to building, we look at new buildings. And from that point on, once we sign off on a new building, it's either property maintenance from that point on, or the fire department take care of it. In some cases, a fire marshal. Paving, it's not a building. I have absolutely nothing in the building code that tells me how to regulate paving. So why is it in there? Let's take it out. And tents, there is a regulation on tents. You do need to permit on any tent that's over 900 square feet, and that's it. It gets inspected after that. As far as using it for housing or backyard camping or anything like that, there's nothing in the building code that covers that. So those are some of the things we removed. Next slide, please. We did make some added, we did add some things that were, needs to be in there because our building code requires it to be in there. One of them is the Building Code of Appeals Board. There was nothing in our regulations. Every time we send a notice of violation, we're required to let folks know that if you are agreed with the building official's decision, or, or you feel that he misinterpreted the code, you have a right to appeal. Well, nothing was in there to cover that, to let somebody know, so we're going to put that in there. The fee schedule, how much does it cost to get a permit, or whatever permit's for, that's now going to be in there. Third-party inspections, the building code says there will, in certain instances, you will have special inspectors for certain things, concrete, steel, stuff like that, that needs to be tested. So we don't test things. Our job is to visually look and make sure all, everything's in place, and we have all the right information available to us. Third-party will do that, but we have to have a policy, and the state requires that. So now we do. We, back in the day, the penalties for fines were $1,000. Well, today it's $2,500 per Virginia code. Our codes references, a lot of the codes, sorry, the building regulation had a lot of holes in it. You go out and you try to enforce something, well, what you were reading and what jived with Virginia code, they didn't meld together. So it was almost, you felt kind of useless trying to go out there and enforce the code, and you had no way of doing that. But now, we brought this up to mirror Virginia code, so we can make reference to it. The adoption of codes, there was a short, maybe two-liner in there. We did extend that. It's more detailed on what codes we are adopting, Virginia Maintenance Code, Virginia Construction Code, Fire Code, all those. Even some international codes, because the Virginia code will send you to an international code every now and again. The National Electric Code is, for instance, Virginia's taken that and used it as a model, and we're going to, it makes reference to the NEC, as they call it, so we have to, we have to adopt that. So we chopped that thing down from 16 pages to 11, and we added stuff that was important in there, so. We have a derelict building section, or unsafe building section, or in our case, unsafe can be used in the event of, it's not just a building, it can be a structure, like a retaining wall. So we now have the means to enforce anything unsafe that is determined to be a structure. And there's definitions and all that good stuff in there that help one understand.
Next slide, please.
So I'm asking you, do they have a copy of the?
Yes, they have.
All right, so you have a copy of the regulations. Between now and the time that everybody agrees on it, we still can add some more stuff to it, or take some stuff away from it, however you, however you want to look at it, but those are the proposed changes. We, I asked that you review them. If you have any questions, call me, email me, come see me, it doesn't matter, we'll talk about it, and I'll try to make light of anything that you may be concerned about. And I understand it says right here, we'll do a second review, and maybe hopefully on the third one, it will be adopted. That's all I have.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is Citizens Period, and we do not have anybody signed in, but this would be the opportunity if someone could, I think, we can speak to counsel. All right, we'll move forward then. Next on the agenda, this, this item, counsel, we have before us, which I will read this ordinance, and then after I read the ordinance, since it's up for a vote tonight, we'll have Fire Chief Slim answer any questions that we may have prior to voting. So ordinance number 1427, and ordinance repealing and replacing Chapter 6 by prevention and protection, and amending and reenacting Chapter 9 offenses miscellaneous Article 3 air pollution control by remaining the article, naming the article, and by removing the following sections, Section 9-76 definitions, Section 9-77 penalties, Section 9-78 authority declaration of policies, Section 9-79 relationship to state rules, Section 9-80 powers and responsibilities of air pollution control officer, Section 9-81 open burning, Section 9-82 smoke or other visible emissions, and Section 9-83 emergency procedure, and amending and reenacting Chapter 11, Police Article 3 Alarm Systems Section 11-44 penalties for false alarms of the code of the town of Withfield, Virginia, on first and final reading. So if you want to come out and see if there's any questions from the council, I appreciate that.
Good evening, everyone. Since we brought this to you a few weeks ago, and first couple readings, I have, I haven't had any comments or questions thus far, either externally or internally. If you have some, I'll be glad to answer them for you. If it pleases counsel and you're comfortable with it, otherwise, we'd ask if you go ahead and consider passage of the new ordinances as, as they've been presented.
I mean, good.
I appreciate what you all done, so.
Great presentation too. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate you all a lot.
Right, so counsel consideration by, by counsel to adopt the ordinance on first and final reading. This will require a motion and a roll call vote. Do I have a motion? And a motion and a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion? Right here or none? Again, roll call vote, we'll start over here, Mr. Gilman?
Gilman, aye.
Patterson, aye. Taylor, aye.
Atkins, aye.
Johnson, aye.
Very much, moving forward. Next is an ordinance, number 1428, an ordinance establishing a housing rehabilitation zone in the town of Withfield, Virginia, on first and final reading. We'll have a town assistant manager remain open to answer any questions before we vote your votes.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. We have looked at this several times, and tonight, the clerks have put this in ordinance format, and so if anybody has any questions or concerns, I can address those. If not, the ordinance is ready. Another amendment, since the last time we looked at this, is we do have the zone map. If you look in your packets or on the screen, at this time, there are no selected properties. If you recall, if you recall from the policy that we developed, there will be a selection committee formed to review applications, and I will build out an application on the Open GO portal for folks to apply to be in the zone. At some point in the future, when we have the applications, we will bring those to town council for your consideration. But tonight, we are just reviewing and potentially adopting ordinance 1428, which establishes the rehabilitation zone and the attached map, which has no selected properties.
Okay. Anybody from council have any questions? All right, here are none. Consideration by the town council to adopt ordinance number 1428 on first and final reading. This will take a roll call vote. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Do I have a second? All in favor? If I'm to say none? We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Right here or none? This will be a roll call vote. Start with Councilwoman Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Atkins, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Gilman, aye.
Now, motion passes. Thank you. Next on the agenda is to consider the request of a junior organizing for traffic control to conduct a Martin Luther King Junior Day March on Sunday, January 14, 2024.
Thank you. This evening before you is an application submitted by the Virginia Organizing Project. The request was submitted by Mr. Kerry Eames for a Martin Luther King Junior march and program set for Sunday, January the 14th, from 2:00 to 3:00 PM. And in your packets, you have the details about that event. There is also a map in your packet that shows the location of the march. It will begin at the Bethel AME Church and proceed down to the Millwall, and the police department will assist with that request if you approve this application. If you have any questions, I am here to answer them.
Counsel, have any questions? Ms. Hilton?
I mean, when you say the old assist, what does that mean exactly, roughly? Say one of them, tell me.
Traffic control.
Assist.
That means that they will regulate the traffic on both ends of the march to make sure that the march is safe.
Would be like a rolling?
A rolling roadblock, yes.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions or concerns? I'll need a motion, a second?
Some move.
A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second?
I'm going to get first here on a second. I'm sorry. I apologize. I'm going to slow. I'm going to look.
But any, any dialogue? Motion, second? All right, carry on. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye as well. Motion passes. Thank you, Hilton. Next on the agenda is to consider an appointment of the Withfield Recreation Commission to fill expiring term of Mr. Michael Mitchell, commission to fill the expiring term of his term, which expires December 31, 2023. And before we get into this, I would like to ask counsel if they wish to have any meet and greets before we have six people that are, we're going to be talking about tonight. So if we want to do meet and greets, then we would need... So if we want to do meet and greets, then we would need to go ahead and vote on a work session. Set it up for January 8th at 4:00 p.m. So before we go through all this and then we at the end, we might want to meet and greet, so we'll decide on that upfront.
You want to do a meet and greet for the reappointments also or not?
That's totally up to y'all. I would probably say no.
No, because they're already in the position.
Right.
They want to go ahead and vote and then do a meet and greet with the others. And am I understanding?
Right, I think we just need to decide about the the meet and greet. And and vote on that.
It sounds to me like there there could be a motion. You could be, one of you could present a motion, I think, to combine to do meet and greets for items D, F, and H and establish a work session date for for the first meeting in January if you would like to do. And that would basically take care of those three agenda items. And then you could just address the, I'm sorry, yes, E and G separately. And I'm happy to restate that if that's clear. So items D, F, and H are for appointments to Building Code Appeals Board, the Recreation Commission, and the Whitfield Economic Development Authority. Those three are would all be new appointments. And if you would like to do meet and greets with the various candidates for those positions, I think you could schedule a single work session the first week of January, or first meeting in January, the January the 8th at 4:00 p.m. And that would address those three items. If someone wanted to formulate that motion.
I'd like to make a motion to have a single work session for items D, F, and H. So that we can have a meet and greet session with the five candidates, please.
All right, do we have a motion and table? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion second. Is there any? Here are none. Motion passes. We will. Roll call vote, please. Mr. Gilman?
Gilman, aye.
Anderson, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Atkins, aye.
Johnson, aye.
Thank you for everybody involved in that one. Next on the agenda is to consider the reappointment of Ms. Brittany Litten to the Whitfield Recreation Commission. Her term expires December 31, 2023. She is she just qualified for reappointment. Need a motion? I want to make that motion, please. Motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Right here or none? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye as well. Any opposed? Right, that motion passes. That we have.
If you have any, Mayor Taylor.
Next is item G, which is to consider the reappointment of Ms. Melissa Rocket to the Whitfield Economic Development Authority. Term expires December 12, 2023. I would need a motion.
So moved.
Need a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Right here and none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye as well. Any opposed? Right, motion passes. Anything over H? Next on the agenda would be I. Establishment of real property tax due date. This time manager Freeman will educate us.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. As you all know, there was a slight delay this year in getting the real estate tax information over to the county, over to the town from from the county. With County has established January 31st as their new due date and in consultation with Treasurer Stevens, but asked that the council set January 31st, 2024 as the new due date for real estate taxes for the current tax year. Any questions? I could.
So you said January?
31st. That is when the county, we believe, has already established that date. Typically, we're consistent with the same date. These would have already been due last week. So just we had the delay in getting the information and delay in getting them out, so they have not been mailed. But that is the preferred date.
Okay, they haven't, they, you're right, they haven't been mailed yet.
Correct.
So in the event that they're not mailed, I would like for people to have at least 45 days notice, no less than. They're not mailed out. Do you think they will be changing their day?
I'd be afraid to say. I really don't know. I don't know if the county has mailed them out. I don't know if you have all have seen them yet. I do believe they took an action to establish that as their date. Mr. Stevens did tell me that this this has to go through our accounting system and dates are created that way. Right now, BAI, which is who has our accounting system. This is the day they're sort of working with currently in anticipation of this. If it needed to be changed, we could probably change it. It might be easier to establish this date and then if they don't go out, maybe we come back and and do a new notice and extend it, if that makes sense. If it doesn't, please tell me and I'll try to say it a different way.
So if their date changes, then we will change ours?
I think it'd be at your pleasure, but if something happens and and these don't go out this week, be happy to. We won't have another meeting until January the 8th, but I think if you chose to on January the 8th to extend it, you could.
What is our normal timeframe from the time we send it out to to the citizens and how?
Well, that's a good question. I mean, it, I think it fluctuates a little bit. The due date, I believe, is December the 5th typically. So there's probably always a little bit of change in there, just depending on, you know, reassessment years, those typically go. We had that, what, last year, year before, where they went much later. This year, they've gone later just due to some software issues over in the Commissioner of Revenue's office. So it's really tough to say, Mayor Taylor, and I.
You should come out around, I want to say near the end of October. And then they are due.
Give you five or six weeks in there, and that's about where we're at right now.
Yeah, so that way they have a little bit over 30 days to be able to.
Yeah, and Mike said we, Mr. Stevens said we did have a lot of early people who just went ahead and paid in anticipation of what it would be. So he said we have, we've we've actually taken in quite a bit of payments already.
Quite a few people went into the Commissioner of Revenue giving their amounts of what they think it may be.
Right, based on their assessments and the tax rate and computing it, yep.
They're going ahead and paying and then if it's not, you know, they're not after it, then they're going to come back and. Get some money.
Or get some money back, true, or credit or whatever it may be. So Mayor Taylor, I would I would ask the council to establish January 31st as a new date, new date. And if for some reason there's some other unforeseen delays, we'll notify you of it and then we would still have January the 8th to do an extension, should that be necessary.
For council, we need consideration by town council to establish the real property tax due date of January 31, 2024. I would need a motion.
So moved.
I'm a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I do have some discussion. I apologize, but I I know, you know, sometimes when I run into people, they always say, why do you do taxes at, you know, Christmas time and things like that? Didn't know if there was something that we could look into. I know that people can also pay them early. They can pay them, from my understanding, any time of the year. They can pay towards them and things like that. Is there some way that maybe we could look at a partial pay, like go ahead and pay some in July? Possibly like when people are looking overtime and things like that. Is that something that 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 can be looked into? I hate to slam people right back to back, but you know, at least give them that option. You can go ahead and pay half now. But if and then if not, then you could pay the all of it.
Yeah, so I think I think that option is all is already there. I mean, it could be that maybe what we could do differently is maybe make more people. Well, we we can't mail out the tax ticket in July because trying to think how to explain it. So With County does all the assessments. The Commissioner of Revenue's Office handles all of that. There are some. Then they they pass that information over to the town. We're kind of dependent upon them. If we get the information in November, which would be typical, right? Or excuse me, late October. And then you hold it until July of the next year, you're going to be in an entirely different fiscal year.
No, so what I'm saying is go ahead and say, okay, this is what, you know, is possibly going to be owing in December. If you want to go ahead and make, you know, a payment, here's like mid, mid, or somehow look at something like that and give a people a choice. I know some may not know about it.
Yeah, let me talk to Mr. Stevens about that and see if there's some other way we can make people aware that prepayment options are always available. What I think would essentially would happen is is they would, their account would get a credit each time they make a payment and then when it comes due, they they would have a lesser amount. So I think that option exists already.
Well, and I know that I think we've talked about that before, but I just didn't know if somehow to, like in the middle of summer, say, you know, this is estimate of what you owe. If you want to go ahead and pay some towards it. You know, but I know you could probably do something.
Okay. Take a look at that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other conversation? Here are none. This requires a roll call vote. Mr. Gilman?
Gilman, aye.
Anderson, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Atkins, aye.
Johnson, aye.
Thank you very much. And item J is what was asked to at the agenda to take that off the agenda, so we need a motion.
J would be in the item. Oh, but we did just, oh, no, that's a different.
Oh, there you go. Okay, yeah, because of Virginia Tech. All right, so next on the agenda is to schedule a work session for Monday, January 22nd, 2024 at 4:00 p.m. to hear presentations from Virginia Tech students regarding their project in this town. Anybody have any? Sturms, we have a motion.
So moved.
Motion and a second. So any questions, concerns, dialogues? Right. Clear or none? All in favor? Signify by saying aye. All right, so. All right, we're going to do a roll call. Johnson?
Johnson?
Atkins, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Anderson, aye.
Gilman, aye.
Thank you very much. We'll start at. So before council to consider canceling the public hearing that was scheduled for January 8th at 5:00 p.m. Which was for property located at 1035 Water Street. Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I didn't hear you. I'm so sorry. She's trying to.
I'm sorry. I was just trying to hit my glasses. I apologize.
Second.
So moved.
I'll second. I'll second that. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Can we can we have discussion, Mr. Freeman, about? Or do we need to go into closed session?
No, I'm, the property is no longer available. So there's no.
Do you have any details?
It's sold with a 10 10 day cash offer. Closing. It's gone. It's it transacts.
Did you see any?
She may not have seen it all, yeah.
It was just, it came.
Properties, it's just that long.
Right, any other discussion? Right, requires a roll call vote. Mr. Gilman?
Gilman, aye.
Anderson, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Atkins, aye.
Johnson?
Next on the agenda, the staff report from Town Manager Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. This will be very brief. Just a couple of quick updates here. 20th Street Bridge, I know, has been on everyone's mind and I've had some requests recently for updates on that. I think maybe some citizens have reached out to to a few of you. Norfolk and Southern has indicated that their engineering consulting firm, AE Comm, will be on site tomorrow, December the 12th, to do an inspection and advise Norfolk and Southern of necessary repairs. And they do have the the engineering report from our engineers to start with, but they will be on site to do their own inspection tomorrow. So we look forward to hearing what they have to say about that. In the meantime, engineering and public works staff are still working on a plan to complete, complete a passable road across the unimproved portion of Madison Street right away. This would allow the neighborhood and public safety personnel a second means of ingress and egress should there be an issue with Railroad Avenue itself. We'll just get a makeshift road in there and the intent is to try to get that in there this winter. Public Works Director Peoples has indicated to me that that is, for lack of a better term, good winter work. Engineering staff is going to be consulting with VDOT on some culvert sizing and things like that because down in the bottom of of that swale, there is a little perennial stream that runs in there. In addition to that, the speed limit on Route 21 as it approaches Railroad Avenue has been stepped down to 35 miles per hour to allow safer turns to onto and from Railroad Avenue. So we think that will help the people in the neighborhood navigate that pull out there a little bit easier. Any questions about that? Before I move on. Also, I'd like to let you know that Heritage Walk Phase 3 is finally underway. After five years of planning from grant application, approval, design, bidding, et cetera, we've moved into the implementation phase. This phase will complete the sidewalk connection on Tassel Street from the visitor center to the existing sidewalk near Ridge Road. Contractors have already began to mobilize on site. You'll see a lot of flagging, a lot of staking. Surveyors were up there last, I believe, Thursday. Don't know if they actually broke any ground today. It was not up that way. But they are here. This is 150 day contract, so we're anticipating this being done by May. You know, severe inclement weather may delay that, but but basically they should be here every day that the weather permits between now and the end of the contract. And that's all I have, Mayor Taylor.
Next is a report of upcoming meetings by Chief Deputy Clerk, Brandon Jones.
The Whitfield Planning Commission meeting scheduled for Thursday, December 14th, has been canceled due to the holidays. Downtown Whitfield Incorporated will meet on Monday, December 18th at 5:30 at the DTW office on Main Street. The Whitfield Redevelopment and Housing Authority will meet on Monday, I'm sorry, on Wednesday, December 20th at 12:00 p.m. at the Housing Authority office. The New River Regional Water Authority will meet on Thursday, December 21st at 10:00 a.m. at the water plant in Austinville. The town of Whitfield municipal offices will be closed and all services curtailed on Friday, December 22nd, Monday, December 25th, and Monday, January 1st, due to the Christmas and New Year's holiday. And the next regular scheduled work session will be held at 4:00 p.m. on Monday, January the 8th, 2024. scheduled work session will be held at 4:00 PM on Monday, January the 8th, 2024, prior to the regular scheduled town council meeting at 5:00 PM here in the council chambers.
Moving on to other business, council member time.
Nothing at this time, President.
Come back. Second.
A couple of things I have. There is apparently some issues with some pine needles and pine cones at the 300 Sherwood Forest. I know that, I think Mr. Freeman, I've been talking about that a little bit. Apparently, if someone can still look at that, it's apparently a mess like the culverts. They can maybe be cleaned out. I just want to make note of that. Thank you, sir. Also, there's an issue, I think, of a little clutter in the 800 block of East Lexington Street. I think that's maybe been looked into, but if we could maybe look into it again. Don't mind. Also, between Mountain View and 13th Street, I think we've talked about stop sign there, if at all possible. There's a lot of walkers. I think some gentlemen has reached out to you as well.
And I've talked to him. Sent him a sent him an email about a week ago. I haven't heard back from him. I have talked to him.
Well, if if we can maybe look at putting a stop sign there, there's apparently a lot of walking traffic there. As soon as you come, you know, through the blind hill and then down, different types of weather and things like that. But if we could possibly put a stop sign there, if at all possible. That, and then didn't know if there was any way we could do like a possible resolution for the Christmas cheer member from this past weekend. If we can look at maybe doing that in the near future for the, since it was like a large event for the town.
That would be up to you all.
I'm sorry, what? Maybe do a resolution for the event that just was held over the weekend for, you know, the community. Didn't know if we could do a resolution for the, we could look into that.
That's an idea, but I'm not sure why. I'm undecided.
That's just a nice suggestion.
You said a resolution?
Yes, ma'am.
I think it would be nice. I really enjoyed watching the children and the adults ride the train that they had. It was pretty amazing, pretty neat. The children came up with their own little beat while they were riding that train and singing Christmas carols. I enjoyed watching all of the children enjoy themselves, and that's what it's all about. Families coming out, kids enjoying themselves.
Any other comments? You want to go, don't you?
I don't want to offend anybody, make them do something they don't like.
You're not going to make anybody. I just wanted, I mean, it's just an odd thing.
It was just the fault.
You know, we're normally doing, you know, school kids and and and, you know, all those different things. So I was just wondering what? Why that came up?
I just think it was a great event, brought a lot of people out, different backgrounds of different people in the community, a lot of, you know, diversity and things like that. I just think it was a great joint effort, isn't it?
So should we do that for like our Fourth of July and our Christmas events too?
Whatever you want to do, Mary Taylor. You seem to make the calls, so whatever.
I'm just asking some questions. All right, so we have a a request to. Yes, so we need a motion.
I would like to make a mention that we have a resolution for the previous. Christmas to remember. That was previously held this last Saturday.
So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Do you have any dialogue? All right, there are none. The roll call vote, Ms. Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Atkins, aye.
Taylor, aye. Vote.
Gilman, aye.
All right. Anything else before? Do you have anything to bring?
Yes, I do. I'd like to thank Mr. Freeman and the Public Works Department for taking care of 22nd Street. The citizens are very pleased, and thank you for taking care of the other issues that we discussed and we appreciate.
Well, let me can I stop you there and give credit to Public Works? Don't credit me with that. I'd like I'd give credit to the guys who got the work done, so, but thank you.
Thank you, and that's all I have right now. I do reserve.
I don't have any items, so those of you who reserved your right, we got about a hot minute.
Are we still going into closed session or not?
Yep.
But when we come back out, can we?
We have something left. We can have another hot minute, I think.
Maybe two hot minutes.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is council committee reports. I know everybody's committees are split up. Some of them live three months, some of them live four months, but we just got them every month, so. Gilman, do you have any report for your committee? I think it's downtown Whitfield. Vice Mayor?
None.
Second.
No, ma'am.
Atkins at this time. I am on the precommittee, and they just met, so I will just say that they are still working on their walking program. They want to do three walking programs, what they're working on. So they're still working on it, but that's that's pretty much the update on that.
Will the committees kind of circle back around? Will we change?
I think at the first of the year, we're going to we're going to discuss either stay in some places or retire or something like that.
We do it as a council, correct? Okay.
All right, anything else to come before council? All right, so council now feels it necessary to go into closed session. Close meeting pursuant to State 2.2-3711A8. Consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters. Requires a motion and a vote. Mr. Gilman? We have a motion.
Certainly.
On the second. Second. Motion in the second. Is there any discussion? There are none. All favor, signify by saying aye. As well. And we are now in closed session.
All right, it's time for town council to come out of closed meeting that was pursuant to 2.2-3711 AA for consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters. So I need a motion to come out of closed meeting. A motion, do you want to have a second?
Second.
A motion, second, is there any discussion? Right. This we call a roll call vote, so Ms. Johnson?
Johnson.
Atkins. Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these? Need a roll call vote, a motion and roll call vote.
We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? So being a roll call vote. Johnson.
Atkins.
Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these? Need a roll call vote, a motion and roll call vote.
We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? So being a roll call vote. Johnson.
Atkins.
Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these? Need a roll call vote, a motion and roll call vote.
We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? So being a roll call vote. Johnson.
Atkins.
Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these? Need a roll call vote, a motion and roll call vote.
We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? So being a roll call vote. Johnson.
Atkins.
Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these? Need a roll call vote, a motion and roll call vote.
We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? So being a roll call vote. Johnson.
Atkins.
Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these?
Need a roll call vote, a motion and roll call vote. We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? So being a roll call vote. Johnson.
Atkins.
Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these?
Need a roll call vote, a motion and roll call vote. We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? So being a roll call vote. Johnson.
Atkins.
Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these?
Need a roll call vote, a motion and roll call vote. We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? So being a roll call vote. Johnson.
Atkins.
Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these?
Need a roll call vote, a motion and roll call vote. We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? So being a roll call vote. Johnson.
Atkins.
Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these?
Need a roll call vote, a motion and roll call vote. We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? So being a roll call vote. Johnson.
Atkins.
Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these?
Need a roll call vote, a motion and roll call vote. We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? So being a roll call vote. Johnson.
Atkins.
Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these?
Need a roll call vote, a motion and roll call vote. We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? So being a roll call vote. Johnson.
Atkins.
Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these?
Need a roll call vote, a motion and roll call vote. We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? So being a roll call vote. Johnson.
Atkins.
Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these?
Need a roll call vote, a motion and roll call vote. We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? So being a roll call vote. Johnson.
Atkins.
Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these?
Need a roll call vote, a motion and roll call vote. We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? So being a roll call vote. Johnson.
Atkins.
Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these?
Need a roll call vote, a motion and roll call vote. We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? So being a roll call vote. Johnson.
Atkins.
Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these?
Need a roll call vote, a motion and roll call vote. We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? So being a roll call vote. Johnson.
Atkins.
Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these?
Need a roll call vote, a motion and roll call vote. We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? So being a roll call vote. Johnson.
Atkins.
Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these?
Need a roll call vote, a motion and roll call vote. We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? So being a roll call vote. Johnson.
Atkins.
Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these?
Need a roll call vote, a motion and roll call vote. We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? So being a roll call vote. Johnson.
Atkins.
Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these?
Need a roll call vote, a motion and roll call vote. We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? So being a roll call vote. Johnson.
Atkins.
Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these?
Need a roll call vote, a motion and roll call vote. We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? So being a roll call vote. Johnson.
Atkins.
Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these?
Need a roll call vote, a motion and roll call vote. We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? So being a roll call vote. Johnson.
Atkins.
Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these?
Need a roll call vote, a motion and roll call vote. We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? So being a roll call vote. Johnson.
Atkins.
Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these?
Need a roll call vote, a motion and roll call vote. We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? So being a roll call vote. Johnson.
Atkins.
Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these?
Need a roll call vote, a motion and roll call vote. We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? So being a roll call vote. Johnson.
Atkins.
Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these?
Need a roll call vote, a motion and roll call vote. We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? So being a roll call vote. Johnson.
Atkins.
Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these?
Need a roll call vote, a motion and roll call vote. We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? So being a roll call vote. Johnson.
Atkins.
Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these?
Need a roll call vote, a motion and roll call vote. We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? So being a roll call vote. Johnson.
Atkins.
Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these?
Need a roll call vote, a motion and roll call vote. We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? So being a roll call vote. Johnson.
Atkins.
Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these?
Need a roll call vote, a motion and roll call vote. We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? So being a roll call vote. Johnson.
Atkins.
Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these?
Need a roll call vote, a motion and roll call vote. We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? So being a roll call vote. Johnson.
Atkins.
Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these?
Need a roll call vote, a motion and roll call vote. We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? So being a roll call vote. Johnson.
Atkins.
Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these?
Need a roll call vote, a motion and roll call vote. We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? So being a roll call vote. Johnson.
Atkins.
Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these?
Need a roll call vote, a motion and roll call vote. We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? So being a roll call vote. Johnson.
Atkins.
Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these?
Need a roll call vote, a motion and roll call vote. We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? So being a roll call vote. Johnson.
Atkins.
Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these?
Need a roll call vote, a motion and roll call vote. We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? So being a roll call vote. Johnson.
Atkins.
Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these?
Need a roll call vote, a motion and roll call vote. We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? So being a roll call vote. Johnson.
Atkins.
Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these?
Need a roll call vote, a motion and roll call vote. We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? So being a roll call vote. Johnson.
Atkins.
Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these?
Need a roll call vote, a motion and roll call vote. We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? So being a roll call vote. Johnson.
Atkins.
Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these?
Need a roll call vote, a motion and roll call vote. We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? So being a roll call vote. Johnson.
Atkins.
Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these?
Need a roll call vote, a motion and roll call vote. We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? So being a roll call vote. Johnson.
Atkins.
Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these?
Need a roll call vote, a motion and roll call vote. We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? So being a roll call vote. Johnson.
Atkins.
Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these?
Need a roll call vote, a motion and roll call vote. We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? So being a roll call vote. Johnson.
Atkins.
Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these?
Need a roll call vote, a motion and roll call vote. We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? So being a roll call vote. Johnson.
Atkins.
Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these?
Need a roll call vote, a motion and roll call vote. We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? So being a roll call vote. Johnson.
Atkins.
Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these?
Need a roll call vote, a motion and roll call vote. We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? So being a roll call vote. Johnson.
Atkins.
Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these?
Need a roll call vote, a motion and roll call vote. We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? So being a roll call vote. Johnson.
Atkins.
Taylor. You're now in regular session. I believe there might have been somebody wanting to... Some more comments?
And of course you need to do your certification there, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So can we, can one of you please make a motion to certify that all of those matters identified and the motions go into closed session with this test and no other matter will discuss these?
And we're not having a meeting on the topic yet, we're just making sure.
Yeah, you're out.
Some of them, some of you are. I'll see y'all for breakfast Christmas morning.
All right, we are adjourned.